Hi, my name is Lauren Fowler and I am one of the student moderators participating in today's school board candidate forum. Thank you for having me. I want to kick off this event with our land acknowledgement statement. We, the Lake Oswego School District community, acknowledge that our schools occupy the ancestral and traditional lands of the Kalapuya, Clackamas, and Chloawalla peoples who are now part of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Rond. Our community regrets the painful history of genocide, imposed assimilation, and forced removal of indigenous peoples from this territory, and recognizes that injustices visited upon them have yet to be properly rectified. We honor the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather to educate our children. We honor them by sharing their stories, both told and untold, in our schools and classrooms. We thank those who were and continue to be stewards of these lands and strive to follow their example by learning how to be collaborative caretakers of the resources that these lands offer to future generations. Our community invites you to join us in acknowledging these communities, their traditions, both past and present, as we seek to create equitable outcomes and to build a culture of inclusive belonging for all students, staff, and community.
Thank you, thank you Lauren. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna read so I don't just forget anything. Welcome to the Lake Oswego School Board Candidate Forum. I would like to extend the warm welcome to those joining us online and to all of you here in person tonight. My name is Mona Kelaheh and I have two boys in Lake Oswego School District, an eighth grader and a tenth grader. While I've worn many hats supporting our school boards in previous years, this year I'm honored to serve as the PTO president of Lakewood Middle School and the vice president of the Pacer Parent Club at Lakewood High School. I'm also a proud business owner. This event was organized through a collaborative effort amongst all of the PTOs, PTAs, and parent clubs across Lake Oswego School District. So I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you, you know who you are, who contributed. We couldn't have done it without you, so thank you very much. I am so honored and thrilled to have had the chance to take part in this important event for our community. The purpose of tonight's forum is to help educate parents and voters about all of the candidates running for the May 20th special district election, and to hear firsthand about their priorities for Lake Oswego School District. Serving as a school board member is one of the most important roles within our communities, and I'd like to remind you that they do not get paid. This is a volunteer job. School board members, they do set the foundation for our districts and they provide critical guidance, support, and leadership to administrators, students, teachers, and families. Please join me in welcoming our five candidates. Lena Elbakshish, Neelam Gupta, Brian Bills, Casey Adler, Kate Lepton. Yeah, forgot to say wait, sorry. I'd also like to remind everyone that tonight's forum is being recorded. Hello. So if you miss anything or you just want to relive the magic, you'll be able to find a recording link in the district newsletter coming out this Friday. Before we dive in, just a little bit of housekeeping, please. Audience, please double check that your phones are on silent. We'd love the only buzzing tonight to be from Great Ideas, not ringtones. And candidates, a gentle reminder that tonight is a forum, not a debate. So I would like to ask you to please respect one another and refrain from commenting on other candidates' answers. And I was told to say that the bathrooms are out to the left. If anybody needs to take a break, you're free to walk and get a drink of water or use the bathroom. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce our esteemed student moderators for the evening, all of whom are members of their school's speech and debate teams. And they are: Lauren Fowler, she's a junior at Lakewood High School, Jacob Stuckey, senior at Lakewood High School, Katie Austin, junior at Lake Oswego High School, and Alice Thomas, junior at Lake Oswego High School. There she is. With that, I'll hand the mic over to Katie Austin, one of our incredible student volunteers, who will briefly explain the format for this evening and get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. My name is Katie Austin and I'm a junior at Lake Oswego High School. I want to briefly cover the format of the forum. Before we begin, each candidate will have a brief moment to introduce themselves. With our limited time candidates, we ask that you simply state your name and the position you're running for. After the introductions, we'll then start asking the questions. We have five questions prepared and we are going to be doing an equal time Q and A. You'll each have two minutes to respond to each question and we'll alternate who goes first by going from left to right. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement. Lauren and I will be our timekeepers for this evening. As a reminder, you will have two minutes allocated to answer each question. You'll see Lauren hold up a green card when it's your time to speak, and when you have 30 seconds remaining, we'll hold up a yellow card, and when your time is up, we'll hold up a red card. We thank you in advance for making our timekeeping job easy by adhering to the time allotment. Please do not make us interrupt you. In the event that one of you needs a question repeated, please ask and we will do so. So now we'll start with our brief introductions.
Given our limited time, we ask that the candidates please briefly introduce themselves by stating their full name and the position that they are running for. Please keep this introduction brief as we want to make sure we get through all of the questions. Casey will start, followed by Lena, then Brian, then Neelam, and then Kate. Casey, let's have you go first.
Good evening, Casey Adler, position four.
Good evening, Lena Elbakshish, position two.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Bills, position three.
Hi, everyone. Neelam Gupta, position two.
Thanks for being here. I'm Kate Lepton, position four.
Thank you for your introductions. We will now begin the forum portion of this event. To keep things fair, we will rotate the order of who answers the questions each time. We'll begin by pulling a name out of this hat to determine who gets to answer the first question, and the subsequent questions will be rotated for each candidate. Don't worry, we'll be super clear about who's speaking when and our other moderators will announce who's speaking. The first person to speak will be Kate.
All right, Kate, you will be asked to answer the first question of the evening. As a reminder, you have two minutes to respond. Then after your time, Casey will go, then Lena, then Brian, then Neelam. The first question is, "We understand that the $10 million budget shortfall will result in staff cuts across the schools and programs. More cuts may be on the horizon. What is the prioritization framework you use to make trade-offs when deciding what positions are cut, such as administrative, special education, languages, and more? Please be specific." Kate, when Lauren holds up the green card, you may begin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Lepton. I'm running for position four. And I would like to start by telling you a little bit about myself so you understand why I would make cuts where I would. I'm a River Grove parent of three. I'm an educator and I'm a lifelong Oregonian. And I am so grateful that my children are going to be able to participate in the Lake Oswego School District for the next 20 years. I am very invested in this community. I'm very invested in our school district. And as a former classroom teacher, I find it of the utmost importance to very carefully balance budgets and make sure that we are providing the best for our children and we're also respecting our teachers. Budget cuts are so difficult, and so it's really hard to make the correct decisions. I think that, let's see. So in terms of where to cut, there's never a correct answer or an answer that anyone really likes. But one of the recent meetings I was attending was the Coordinating Council meeting. This is a meeting that's held at the school district and PTO parents, or excuse me, PTO presidents and PTA presidents are invited to attend in the room along with the superintendent, Mary Kay, and John Wallen. And as I was observing, it's a public meeting, so I was sitting and observing, I got to hear Dr. Shealy explain to the group of parents where she was deciding to make cuts. And I find it to be such a difficult conversation. But she did clearly explain that, for example, one of the things that is being filled in is the .7 FTE PE teacher role. So each school has a .7 FTE PE teacher that is being paid for a full-time position. And so she explained that we are taking that time and helping those teachers to teach in other spaces as well. So difficult to make a decision, but smart decisions like that one are ones that I support.
All right, Casey, you're next.
Just waiting for my green. Ah, there we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Adler. Quick introduction, I'm from Lake Oswego. I grew up here, this would be in the 80s and early 90s. I went to Hallinan back when the place structure was a gigantic wooden construct, if anyone's been around that long and can remember that far. I have a second grader over at Westridge right now, and have long considered Lake Oswego to be my home. So this is, I think, the question of the evening, which is how are we going to confront these challenges in the years ahead. And obviously, it's going to be incredibly complex for all of us to navigate. I think what I wanted to highlight tonight is, amidst the conversations leading up to this evening, what's clear is that every community in Lake Oswego that prioritizes certain programs or draws on certain services, they are incredibly passionate about these programs. And the moment you get into discussions about cost cutting, I think we need to be very careful on how we navigate this in the years to come. For example, I think we should be very careful to avoid a sense of pitting Lake Oswego community members against each other when we're approaching these budget cuts. We don't want to get to a place where it's, oh, we should be approaching closing one school and keeping ours open, or let's eliminate one program over here, let's not focus on our program. The bottom line is, this is an incredibly personal conversation for everybody. And I think the way we need to frame it is that we all need to bear the share of this burden in the years ahead. And we need to adopt basically a bend but not break position with a lot of these programs. Now, if we're up against a wall and we're getting to a point where we need to make a decision on where we need to cut, from my perspective, the place I would bend is in class size. And if it got really up against it, I would take a look at even merging classes at first and second grade level, the third and grade level, if it meant we could protect an individualized education in Lake Oswego. If we start jettisoning special education, if we lose language immersion, if we lose these programs that are so important to this community, we will feel an even greater impact downstream, whether it's enrollment or community goodwill. And I think it needs to be a joint effort as we approach this, rather than target one program who bears the entire cost versus some of us all sharing that burden. Thank you.
All right, Lena.
Good evening. I'm Lena Elbakshish. A little bit about myself. I am a parent of three in the district. I have a kindergartner, a second grader, and a fourth grader. I have a background in finance and accounting, and I've spent the past 20 years working with companies in the Silicon Valley, namely Ernst &amp; Young, Airbnb, and Stripe. So I have quite a bit of experience when it comes to navigating budgets and making the right financial decisions. I'll tell you a little bit about how I think we got to this point. So I've spent quite a bit of time reviewing our budget, and I've narrowed it down to what I believe is one of the main causes for our budget deficit. And I think it anchors on the fact that, and I'm going to be very deliberate here in saying that I don't think that this board has made the right financial decisions or has done the right financial analysis prior to making decisions. We have been operating in a budget deficit for years. We have depleted our reserves and we've chosen to spend our money in both inefficient and unsustainable ways. We have, over the past five years, added 250 employees despite declining enrollment. And I think we really need to look at the reasons why we did that and if that's really cost-effective. This board has signed off on cuts to PE, STEM, and electives, and the things that our students love the most, instead of expensive and unnecessary administrative and overhead costs. And I'm sorry, you can't spend the money and then say that you're not responsible for it. I have narrowed down what I believe is the main driving force behind our budget deficit. We spend $22 million on support for students with behavioral issues. These are not students that require learning support. These are students that are violent in classrooms and require a one-on-one teaching aid to stay with them. That is contributing to our increase in 250 headcount that we've seen. Oops, sorry. I can also tell you that 17 of these children were so violent that they had to be removed from the classroom at a cost of $1.7 million. So that is where your PE went, that is where your STEM went, and that is where all the electives that have been cut has gone.
Okay, Brian.
Thank you, Jacob. A bit about myself. My name is Brian Bills. I am not a native Oregonian, but I have been here since my oldest, who is graduating high school this year, has been in kindergarten. I have two other kids, one at the middle school and one in elementary. I am a returning board member, and I think those things are important because they give me a perspective into all the levels of education that we provide for students in our district. My professional background is in corporate and structured finance, as well as legislative reform for developing countries. And I bring all, and education, which is what I do now, I bring all of those things to these types of questions. So when considering how we manage the budget shortfall and the impact that it has on staffing, 80% of the district's budget is staffing. So you don't navigate a shortfall the size that we are facing without an impact to teachers. I think it's important to note a couple of things. Number one, administration in our district is significantly lower per rata than the other districts that we compare ourselves with by size in the state. Number two, it is the one area of employment in which we have shrunk size over the last 10 years and not grown. Third, we have made decisions in staffing to not refill administrative positions that have been vacated for retirement or other similar reasons, and have chosen instead to rely on existing administrators to pick up that slack, share the work, and find ways to do more with less. In terms of the elephant in the room, inevitable cuts to staff, which are a function of our shortfall, there are a few things that we are constrained by, one of which is contracts. We have to navigate in the way that our collective bargaining agreement allows us.
Right, and Neelam.
Hi, everyone. Neelam Gupta. I have a 35-year history with the Lake Oswego Schools. First as a sibling, my brother graduated from Lake Oswego High School and has launched into a medical career as a practicing physician, and now as a parent. I just want to say, first of all, that Lake Oswego School District has strategically used state and federal grants to support students in the wake of the pandemic. We also, unlike neighboring school districts, which have had deficits in the past, this is the first year we've had it, and we are cutting in a way so that we only have to cut this one year. We have prioritized keeping class sizes small at the same level as they are at the elementary school level, because we know keeping class sizes small has results. We also have prioritized continuing to have our excellent academic offerings at the secondary school level. And I just want to say, this is not a result of poor finance decisions. We have excellent financial management. This, Oregon has never funded education at the appropriate level. There is a statewide commission that studies what it takes to educate students, and we are spending, as a state, 30% less. And in spite of that, here in Lake Oswego, we have been able to deliver results and educational excellence.
All right, thank you so much. Then I'll pass it over to Alice.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, for question two, each candidate will have two minutes to answer this question. We will start with Casey, then move on to Lena, Brian, Neelam, and finish with Kate. The second question is, "What is your approach to long-term financial sustainability for the district, such as additional revenue streams and reducing reliance on state and federal funding? How do you provide transparent community engagement?" Casey, when Lauren holds up the green card, you may begin.
Sure. So I think what I'd like to begin with here is, you know, my background is finance and risk management. I went to school back east at University of Pennsylvania. I was a double major, so I could study at the Annenberg School and the Wharton School. And I've spent my career in finance and basically living in Excel spreadsheets. I think this is going to be, again, the number one priority for the district, is how are we navigating our budget. And as has been raised here today, I'm not convinced how much the community was aware of the fact that our district has been in deficit spending for the last several consecutive years. And when I think about how different the environment would be here, these years of uncertainty, having a bulwark against unforeseen budget hits, and our ability to sustain short-term changes and then plan and adapt for those environments would be amazing. And so in the short term, I think the first thing we need to do is not only operate in a sustainable and transparent fashion with our budget, but we need to get, in fact, back to operating at a surplus so that we can restore our reserves as quickly as possible, so we're not reactive when these issues come. Now, I think something we'll talk in greater detail today is going to be talking about proficiency scores as it pertains to Salem. I think a lot of the conversation, as you might have read about in the press recently, has been this discourse between, well, is budgets a matter of accountability, or is it a matter of resources for the state of Oregon? And I think the way we're going to have to combat this moving forward is to tackle the question of proficiency scores and the performance of our kids as it pertains to our future negotiations with Salem. But more specifically, and in the short term, I think one way that we can target relief that does not require Salem at all would be to go after absenteeism. I don't think it gets the attention it deserves, but it's something that doesn't require external help. It's something we can do as a district to engage directly with students who are missing time, and it would mean relief for our district in terms of finances here in the short term. But ultimately, for more resources, this is going to require our district showing some leadership in how you can engage with the state of Oregon to unlock additional resources. It's true, we're functioning underneath the quality education model, so we need to start holding their feet to the fire and do so by showing proven results, if we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. We'll be moving on to Lena next. You may begin when Katie holds up the green card.
Thank you. So I think, very simply put, financial sustainability for me means being able to analyze and quantify all our decision-making. We need, for every decision that this district makes, we need to have a model, and we need to say, what is the cost now? What is the cost in the future? And then we need to do a retroactive to say, did the costs that we spend on this actually yield the intended results? You know, right now, we are spending more money than we've ever spent, and our test scores and proficiency rates have declined significantly over the years. So that tells me that we're spending in the wrong ways. And so we need to go back, very simply put, and say, do our decisions actually drive improvement? And I think the only way to do that is by adhering to facts, data, and we need to remove ideology and, you know, emotion from these decision-making going forward.
Thank you, Lena. We will now move on to Brian. You may begin when Katie holds up the green card.
Repeating the question, please.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
The question was, "What is your approach to long-term financial sustainability for the district, such as additional revenue streams and reducing reliance on state and federal funding? How do you provide transparent community engagement?"
Fantastic, thank you. So I think, I'd like to focus first on the transparency. If any of you have had the opportunity, or taken the opportunity, to check into our board meetings that we have for the school board, you will notice that we are often inviting participation. We are often inviting community members to come to the meetings to be more or better informed as to how the process works and what we are deciding on. Some of those things include our budget committee. I've only been on the board for one term, but what I have seen in that time is a level of analysis and fiscal oversight that has been, quite frankly, impressive. Are we in a budget shortfall? Absolutely. Primary cause of that? Hers. Was that anticipated? Partially. Did we mitigate it? Absolutely. We were fortunate that our assistant superintendent was forward-looking and able to make some plans during the last several years, which mitigated the impact that many other districts are facing now. In terms of additional revenue streams, I think it's very important that we look for every opportunity to secure revenue for the district, whether that means leasing portions of land for commercial revenue, whether that means better supporting the foundation and including its ability, improving its ability to draw resources, and relying on our parent community. All of those things come with partnership. I've been a vocal advocate of transparency, promoting town halls on sensitive issues, and I encourage all of you to take every opportunity to get involved, become aware, and let your voice be heard.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll be moving on to Neelam next. You may speak when Katie holds up the green card.
Yeah, I'll also start with transparent community engagement and say that we base our decisions on data, best practice, community engagement. So, you know, we have made decisions such as, based on our special education evaluation, we introduced BizTown for fifth graders. We have made decisions based on community input and engagement. And then to move on to the second part of the question around long-term revenue generation options, there are some short-term solutions that we are pursuing with the legislature, including, there is a bill right now that would either raise or eliminate the special education funding cap, which is currently set at 11%. And in our school district, we are serving 14.3%. We've seen those numbers nearly double in the past 10 years, and we've also seen the numbers of kids on high-cost disability quadruple. So there's another bill that would also put more money into that account as well. And then I would definitely agree with what Director Bill said, that, you know, we need to look at revenue generation options, such as leasing land. Our school's foundation is also, in response to some of the cuts, launching a new initiative to fund PE. So those are some of the ways in which, you know, and we absolutely need to grow back our financial reserves.
Thank you, Neelam. We'll be finishing this question off with Kate. You may speak when Katie holds up the green card.
Thank you. I look forward to talking about this question because I am so proud to have my kids in this school district. My parents were both teachers in Salem Kaiser, and I grew up in kindergarten through 12th grade in the Salem Kaiser Schools, and we did not have the resources that we have here in Lake Oswego. And when my husband and I decided to have kids, we decided we were going to buy a house in the school district boundaries, because this was the place we wanted to raise our kids. And as I've lived here for, I've been here for seven years now, and I have seen this play out, and I see it from a teacher perspective. I spent time teaching in middle school, in high school. I taught in Baltimore. I taught high school Spanish for four years. And then I also taught here at Portland State University for two years, Spanish classes. And what I see here is that And what I see here is that, well, as we know, we're the number one district in Oregon, school district in Oregon, and we are very proud of that fact. And we, parents I know are moving here, buying houses here for the schools. And a lot of people I know are asking me, wow, I wish I would have moved to Lake Oswego. Now we know that the schools are so good, and they're really hoping to get a house here. Our schools are a big draw. We have, as was mentioned earlier, we have a superintendent, assistant superintendent Stuart Ketzler, who's been doing a great job with budgeting throughout the years. And he's really been keeping our district afloat financially despite budget shortfalls. And I want to, I would be remiss to, I want to make sure I mention, our levy we've been funding, our community has been funding the school's levy for the last thirty years. And in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, the levy alone raised fifteen point eight million dollars for our school district. That's twelve percent of our operating budget. So the levy is already being used to its maximum benefit, which is amazing. And that's part of the reason we have such amazing schools here. We also need to vote for the bond in November because that will also provide us with additional funding that won't have to be come from the budget and will go straight towards schools.
Thank you to all your candidates, all our candidates for your answers. I'll turn it over to Jacob now for question three.
Great, thank you, Alice. Okay, so now this time we're going to start with Lena, and then we're going to go around to Brian, Neelam, Kate, and Casey. All right, just a reminder, two minutes. The third question is, there's a lot of public discussion right now about Oregon being ranked close to the bottom of national proficiency tests. What steps will you take to improve Lake Oswego students' performance in reading, math, and science? Then when Katie holds up the green card, you're good to go.
Thank you. I believe that test scores are an important measure of how well we're preparing our students. And unfortunately, in recent years, we've seen a very significant decline in that performance, especially in areas such as math and reading. I think it's very concerning, and it raises a fundamental question that are we teaching the right things in the right way? Our math proficiency rate for eleventh graders is fifty two percent. Shocked, to be honest, considering what, you know, when we moved here, we were told these are incredibly strong schools. And then we see that there's a fifty two percent proficiency rate. Quite frankly, it's unacceptable. And, you know, the only, the district knows that this is unacceptable. So they've only decided to tout graduation rates instead because that ninety seven percent is a much better metric. But I don't think that graduation rates are the only score that matter, frankly. And I, you know, I think there's been a shift in recent years away from foundational academic skills. And while it's important to support the whole child, I think we can't lose sight of our core responsibility, which is making sure that every student is proficient in math, reading, writing, and science. And if we're struggling with the basics, we need to ask whether our curriculum is appropriate, whether it's rigorous enough, and whether instructional time is being used effectively. And I think that, in terms of how we move from here, I think we need to consistently reevaluate our curriculum based on evidence and not on trends. And I think our students deserve that. They deserve an education that challenges them, prepares them, and sets them up for long term success. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lena, and then we're going to go over to Brian. And then once the green card's up, you're good to go.
Thank you, Jacob. This is an interesting question for me. My current profession is in student support, specifically test preparation and college admissions advising. And so I see this from a little bit of a different lens. I think there are a couple of things to keep in mind. First, in Oregon, the proficiency testing is not a graduation requirement. That's been lamented for its own reasons, but the fact is it's not. Which means many students, particularly at the high school level, opt out of these tests. This is by comments that we get directly to the school board. Often come with justifications, they're close to APs, or we have other demands on our time that actually contribute to our graduation, et cetera. And so we don't get the full body of our student population participating in these tests. We are a very high performing district, particularly relative to the state. This is noted by our standing in different rating metrics that evaluate school success. Is there work to be done? Absolutely. When we get presentations to the board about proficiency scores, they are their own presentation. They are not shadowed under the guise of graduation rates. Something independently, we are very, very proud of, but fully recognize as a board that it is not the sole measure. Part of the proficiency rate gap is a function of learning loss during COVID. But more importantly, I have a vision to address that gap with the implementation of generative AI in our district. I'm working with the district to launch this program. Some of you may have heard that there is a federal goal to incorporate AI in education. And I think it has the opportunity to democratize access to academic support and raise the bar for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian, and then we're going to move on to Neelam next.
I did want to address what I think is the recent media coverage of low proficiency scores, which was the twenty twenty five report card for the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, which was released in January of twenty twenty five. And that report card shows that Oregon's fourth and eighth graders scored at the bottom half of all states in math and reading proficiency in tests last year. So NAEP tests random schools in Oregon. Data is only available at a state level and not specifically for Lake Oswego students. Lake Oswego student performance in smarter balance assessment scores, specifically in math and English language arts, has dropped over the last ten years. And but despite that, the Lake Oswego school district has significantly higher scores than Oregon's school districts overall. So during the pandemic, about four years ago, the school board did take proactive steps to assess students and improve their academic outcomes. LOSD began using iReady, which is a K through eight diagnostic assessment and instruction program. And that program is designed to help teachers identify students' strengths and weaknesses in reading and math and to provide personalized instruction to address those learning gaps. And so that is a formative assessment that happens three times a year. In addition, as was mentioned earlier, the school board does review educational data very regularly, including other measures of student proficiency and achievement. I'll just give you a few examples. You know, Lake Oswego's student composite SAT scores have increased slightly from twenty seventeen eighteen. Eighty nine percent of Lake
Sorry, that's
Yeah, sorry.
Right, yeah. Thank you. And then we're going to move on to Kate.
Thank you. I agree, test scores in Oregon are, they're low. And I had mentioned that earlier, especially where I grew up in Salem Kaiser, they were even lower. And so I feel very fortunate to be in the Lake Oswego school district. And I'm, I feel fortunate that our, our school board is currently reviewing all of the data to make sure that they're doing the best that they can for our students. One thing that is really hard for me to watch, especially now that my kids are in public schools in Oregon, is that when I, for example, when I was teaching in Maryland, I taught in Baltimore for four years, high school Spanish. And our students always started school in mid-August. And that gave them a head start for the rest of, a head start compared to Oregon schools because they got an extra, at least an extra ten academic days to prepare for exams, such as the eleventh grade math exam. And instructional days really do matter. Every day counts. And so when we think about budget cuts, it's really difficult to add back days back into the year. But that would be what I would push for as a long term goal, is that we need to have more school days here in Oregon. Most states in the United States have a hundred and eighty school days required, instructional days for students. And here in Oregon, we go by hours, which is a little tricky. And it equals out to about a hundred and sixty days that are required by the state that we must have our kids in, in school for instructional days. It's so, it's so much less than the rest of the country. And to me, it's a very obvious thing that, as a teacher, if you don't have those extra ten days, those extra twenty days in the classroom to teach your kids math, especially in August, then you're not getting, they're not prepared. And so as a state, we need to look at other ways to fund our students and, and support them. So it's not just a Lake Oswego school district thing, it's an Oregon state education thing. And as a district, we have a lot of leverage in the state.
Thank you, Kate. We're going to move on to the last person on this question, Casey.
So it's interesting that, you know, Lena pointed out the fifty two percent proficiency in math. I'll tell you the one that blew my mind. Ten years ago, so twenty fourteen, long before Corona, for science in Lake Oswego, we came in at eighty one percent proficiency, the eleventh grade level, that last touch point we have with our students. As of last year, that number came in at forty three, forty three, down from eighty one. So yes, we have an issue with proficiency scores, not just in Lake Oswego, but statewide. However, as Brian pointed out, we do have some confounding variables in this equation. And it's important to point out that Oregon, that the state of Oregon has not been the best partner in this equation. Making proficiency exams not a requirement to graduate does not make this data more reliable for us. And if they're holding us to account for this data to unlock more resources, then we have an impasse. And the only way we're going to get over this impasse is we're going to have to start showing some leadership in Lake Oswego, designing our own metrics that are undeniable, that we can hold them to account for. And I think the way we're going to have to go about this is we're going to have to dig into these metrics and figure out where the resources going in are actually yielding results for our students. And where can we clearly identify additional needs that are required? And if we don't get that granted with Salem, it's very easy for politicians to say, don't come to us for more money, you're not showing us results. Very clearly, there are issues in this equation, and we're not going to get over it until Lake Oswego gets more involved. And I might add, reinvigorate our commitment to science above all. I think that's something, especially as we start talking about matters of sustainability and prioritizing that for our schools, how can we expect our kids to meaningfully contribute to sustainability if we're not giving them a good grounding in science? And forty three percent ain't going to cut it. So we've got to get on this data if we're going to make a case to Salem for more money in the years to come. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Casey, and then I'm going to hand it back over to Alice for the next question.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, for question four, just as a reminder, each candidate will still have two minutes to answer this question. We will be starting with Brian and then working our way around and finishing with Lena. Question four, gun violence continues to be a top concern for parents across the nation. What is your perspective on improving and ensuring safety for all kids across our district? Brian, when Katie holds up the green card, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Alice. Absolutely. This is a significant priority, not just for me as a board member, not even just for me as a parent, but just as a community member. It's, boggles my mind that we are in a state in our country where this is a conversation that we have at a school board candidate forum. I think the heavy lifting is outside of our control. I think the heavy lifting needs to get done at the federal level. But there are things that we can do as a district to contribute to the safety of our students. At the board meeting before last, there was a discussion about a program that we are putting in with one of our contractors to update the locking mechanisms on all the doors in the district. These are small things, and they are not associated with a small price tag, but they have significant impact. They systematize access to our buildings. They make it very clear and easy for administrators and staff to know who is and is not supposed to be in the building. We have done things like created closed entrances to schools so that guests can come in, interact with administration, but do not have direct access into the buildings. These are the types of things that we have to continue to look at. In the bond that we have proposed for twenty twenty five, a significant component of the bond projects are associated with safety of the schools and upgrading our facilities for that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving on to Neelam.
Yeah, I'm kind of laughing remembering a recent conversation I had with my family. My parents still live here in Lake Oswego. My in-laws also live in Lake Oswego, and we were just talking about their memory of schools was you could just walk right into a school. And I had to tell them, no, it doesn't work like that anymore. We have secured entrances with vestibules so that not anyone can walk into a school. We also, you know, have, you know, take gun violence very, very seriously and have safe storage policies as well. And, you know, our, our schools are, we have school resource officers as well who build relationships with, with our staff and students and ensure safety of our school buildings. And it is a top, top priority for, for us as a school board.
Thank you so much, Neelam. We'll be moving on to Kate next.
I will say, this is a, it's a great question because this keeps me up at night, unfortunately, as a mother of three children in the public schools. And as Brian said, there's a lot of heavy lifting to be done at the federal level, but there is a lot we can do here, too. As I was mentioning before, Lake Oswego is the number one school district in Oregon, as we know. And we're a leader as well because our school board functions very well together and gets a lot done. And there, our school board members are part of the OSBA, the Oregon School Boards Association. And that is a group that's able to lobby in Salem for different things. And they spend a lot of time down there influencing the state's decisions on school issues. And so one of those can be is gun safety and things like that. So we have a lot of sway here in Lake Oswego through our school board to take control, not control, to take a leadership role at the state and help push for safety for all of our students. And I do want to say that I, as a, as a parent at River Grove, I don't know how many people have actually been able to tour River Grove. It's been open for a lot of community events, and it is such a beautiful school. And every single day when I'm there with my kids, I am so grateful that we're a part of that community. And I really am so grateful, too, that, that it's so safe. And it, when you walk, well, you'll have to visit and try to get in during school hours. It's very difficult. I've tried, I've tried to do it. And you, there are double doors, there's a space in the middle that you have got the, that both those doors that are locking. You have the front office staff right in the front of the building. There's all these designs that are, that make me as a parent feel safe because I can't get into the school unless I show that I'm a volunteer and get my background check and show a badge. So we should vote for the bond because all of our schools deserve to have a safe school like River Grove.
Thank you, Kate. We'll be moving next on to Casey.
Well, I'll tell you what keeps me up at night as much as anything these days. I don't know how many folks out here have read any of the news stories or seen any of the studies done about the Cascadia subduction zone. But I think about earthquakes more and more, particularly to the extent the scientists are telling us it's not a matter of if, but when it's going to strike this area at some point. And so speaking of the bond, I think it's something we should make sure that we are prioritizing as we look at future capital improvement project, projects, that to the extent we are hit by a seismic event, that our buildings will stand and our kids will be safe in the event something like that happens. And again, we don't talk about that as much as, probably for good reason. But I think it's something we should prioritize in terms of safety. Also in this space, I'm a big fan of school resource officers. I think the SROs do a fantastic job, and I sleep better I think the SROs do a fantastic job, and I sleep better knowing that they're out there. And I also think it's helpful for our kids to have early and frequent interactions with people who are there to contribute to their safety. These are first responders in our community. And I think it's good for kids to see that they are active and involved in keeping them safe and are accessible to them should an issue arise. And then lastly, you know, something that's come up from time to time in the district is how we approach reporting systems. If kids have incidents in schools and they want to report those in a safe way to the district. So I think it's something that we should keep a close eye on is that we do maintain solid reporting structures where kids or parents can report to the district their concerns and that those systems are anonymous and that the district is following up on it in a transparent way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Casey. Finally, we'll be moving on to Lena. Thank you.
So this is a very relevant topic to me because my kindergartner had a lockdown drill today. He came home and said he was supposed to huddle in a corner and stay quiet. And that just broke my heart. So I think this is an area that the one area I think we are all aligned on in terms of the importance of it is safety in our schools. I think one thing, you know, I view my role or what I would like to be as a school board member is to be the voice of parents and ensure that parents' concerns and wants are reflected in our school board decisions. And I think many parents have come up to me and emphasized they would like to have metal detectors in our schools. And I think that would be an important addition at the middle school and high school level to have that extra layer of security. And I think our budget can support that. I also agree that our facilities need to be rebuilt in a way that are both seismically sound and also safe. We need to build them like a fortress so that nobody from the outside can get inside. And I think, you know, at my local school, it's quite easy because, you know, we haven't, we do not have an updated facility for a parent to walk in or somebody who shouldn't be walking in. And I really think that needs to change. So I think we need to listen to our parents and our community specifically as it relates to this subject. And I don't think there is any room for discussion in terms of making sure that we do what parents and families in this community want.
Thank you all so much for your answers. I'll be turning it over to Jacob for the next question.
All right, thank you, Alice. All right, so this time we are going to be starting with Neelam and then working our way around with Brian being our last person answering this question. As a reminder, two minutes. So the fifth question is, what cultural belonging or inclusion initiatives in our district do you think have been the most beneficial to our students? How will you protect this work in light of new federal executive orders challenging DEI programs? Once the green placard goes up, you're good to go.
Oh, first of all, I want to say that I participated in developing the Lake Oswego School District Strategic Plan, which includes the pillar of creating a culture of belonging. It includes goals and actions such as addressing biases and their impacts, emphasizing professional development in equity, bias, bullying, and harassment, providing authentic curriculum, resources, and training, and developing diverse leadership, teachers, and staff members. And, you know, I think Lake Oswego is going to continue to follow state and federal law. We continue to have a cultural belonging, achieving equitable academic outcomes as priorities. And there has been absolutely no change from that direction. I would support including it in our next strategic plan. We're going to be starting that process later in 2025. I think it is, you know, all of these goals and actions that I mentioned, we've made significant progress towards, but there's still more work to be done. We also have a cultural belonging committee, which is composed of parents, some students, and staff and community members, which works in partnership with the school district to advise us, reviews information and data. And so I would support continuing that committee. And we also take a member from that committee and include them in our legal budget committee as well. So, you know, that, again, I would support the continuation of that direction.
All right, thank you so much, Neelam. Now we're on to Kate.
I grew up in very diverse schools in the Salem Kaiser School District. I went to Inglewood Elementary, Parish Middle School, Waldo Middle School, and then also North Salem High School. I had to move middle schools at one point in my career because I was being bullied and I couldn't stay at the school any longer. So I decided, my parents decided to move me to the neighboring public middle school. And so bullying was a big part of my life throughout the first part of my public school education. And it's near and dear to my heart that we protect our kids and we help teach kids to treat each other with kindness. And that's easier said than done. But place, things like the Culture of Belonging Committee are a good place to start. And there's, of course, there's more that we more we can do. In terms of the DEI and CRT discussions, my Masters of Education Policy and Leadership at Johns Hopkins University prepared me very well for these conversations. We talked at length about DEI and CRT. And I find it really interesting that these are, I mean, they were our bread and butter at the master's level for education policy. And I find it really interesting now that they're more, they're acronyms, kind of buzzwords that almost get thrown around violently. And it's very unfortunate because they really are very important concepts. And in particular, CRT, I really enjoyed using that in my classrooms. CRT, culturally culturally responsive teaching, gave me the opportunity as an educator to respond to the kids that I was teaching in my classroom, which in in my case was the Spanish language students in Baltimore. And I was able to find common ground with my students in terms of music. Because I love music and Latino music is is the best, such good beats, such good music. And so every day I would start my class with an educational song that I had heard on the radio recently, and we would analyze it. And that was one way that I was able to respond with my students. And I hope that, of course, in the Lake Oswego School District, we can focus on DEI and CRT.
All right, thank you so much, Kate. Now we're moving on to Casey.
So in my mind, these issues of inclusion and belonging are nothing new for Lake Oswego. It's not breaking any news here. But as someone who grew up here, you know, for context, I grew up in the the Hallinan neighborhood up on Pine Street, so pretty close to Free Pond's Park. You know, if you think about it, you're only a five-minute walk from the lake up there. But in many ways, growing up in Lake Oswego, you couldn't feel further away from the lake, if you follow me. And I think in my experience, you know, growing up and time spent in Lake Oswego does differ. You're going to see a lot of different perspectives and experiences, which in my mind have largely been tied to socioeconomics in our community. But nonetheless, it's very relevant in our schools even today. And so I do believe the work that the Culture of Belonging that they've been doing has been fantastic and is definitely a worthy commitment for the district. Now, in terms of how we examine, how we are approaching and best serving our underserved communities, certainly we need to be leaning on our advisory committees for a constant touch point. I think that's very important. But also, we should be consulting with outside organizations as well in terms of our best practices. I also think we need to make sure we're continuing to allocate for professional development of our staff and that they are being able to be responsive for students of different needs and backgrounds. But also, I think in a more more granular way, like, for example, the district approved the integrated grant proposal yesterday. And included in that proposal are a number of grants, a number of programs and initiatives that are targeted to underserved communities. And I think we, as a school district, when these are funded year over year, we really need to be digging into that data and seeing, are we in fact serving all the different communities in Lake Oswego? And making sure that we're following up where we see success. And when we're not seeing success, we need to go in a different direction. But I think that so long as we are actively monitoring our ability to deliver for these kids, then we're on the right path.
All right, thank you so much, Casey. And then we're going to move on to Lena next.
So I will preface this by saying I don't have a well-crafted answer for this, so I'm going to speak from the heart. This is a deeply personal topic to me, so I will know that as I'm sharing it with you. So I am the child of immigrants. My children are ethnically diverse. And I have never once viewed my ethnicity as a limiting factor. If anything, it has pushed me forward and it's made it all the more important for my voice to be heard. And I think it's really, really important that we teach our children about perseverance and resilience and that there is not a system that is set up to work against them. With that said, I am extremely supportive of curriculum that encourages understanding, empathy, and appreciation for our diversity. I think it's important for our kids to know that in this increasingly diverse community that we live in and in their futures and in their careers. But I really think that we should be mindful of that lens when we address it. And I think that our children have an extremely bright future ahead of them. And I want to make sure that they know that. And I think that lens currently, it encourages a defeatist mentality, and I think it squashes any sort of ambition. So I think we need to be extremely careful about that.
All right, thank you so much, Lena. And then finally, we're going to have Brian take a shot at the question.
Thank you, Jacob. If I ask you to repeat the question, I think it's important for it to be heard again.
Yep. What cultural belonging or inclusion initiatives in our district do you think have been the most beneficial to our students? How will you protect this work in light of new federal executive orders challenging DEI programs?
Thank you, Jacob. This is extremely, extremely important work. As educators, our priority is to educate all of our children. That education requires a broad, broad lens. It is not the lived reality of everyone that race, ethnicity, gender identity opposes no barriers. It is fantastic for those for whom that is not the case, but we all know that it is not absent in all instances. The thing that I consistently talk to parents, neighbors, friends, my own family about is that this issue germinates at the dining room table. It manifests itself in the classroom and in the public spaces that we are aware of, but it is not bred there. So our role is reactive in some regard by necessity. We've done a number of things in that district, some of which were, many of which were started before I had the privilege of serving on the board, that acknowledge where we have come from as a community and where we aspire to be. Things like our Culture of Belonging Committee, things like the programs at elementary schools, which give students an opportunity to walk in the shoes of students with experiences and backgrounds different than them. These are all extremely important things that breed empathy, understanding, and shed daylight on issues that are very, 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 very real. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. And then I'm going to pass it back over to Alice.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, we're on our last and final question of the night. So this is our final question, and that means it will be our candidate's closing remarks. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer this question. This time, in terms of who gets to go first, we will go backwards in terms of seating order. That means we will have Kate provide her closing statements, then Neelam, then Brian, then Lena, then Casey. For closing remarks, we would like you to answer the following question, which you were provided ahead of the forum. The final question is, you are running for the school board because you want to make a difference. What are you solving for? What are your strategic visions for the for Lake Oswego School District? And what systemic changes would you like to see? Remember, you have three minutes to answer this question. Kate, when Katie holds up the green card, you may start.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate seeing so many friendly faces in the audience. And this is a community that really cares about education. And that's why we chose to live here is because it makes a difference to have all of these parents and community members that really care about our schools and want to provide input, provide voting power for levies and bonds, to provide volunteerism for our schools. Because we have so many great volunteers here in Lake Oswego, it really does make a huge difference. So thank you for showing up tonight. I I have a few different ideas for the school district, and they come from my time as a teacher and my time and now as a parent in Lake Oswego Public Schools and also come from my time with my master's degree in education policy. One of the most important things that I've mentioned, and I have a guest review in the, in the, or excuse me, a guest opinion in the Lake Oswego Review that was published two weeks ago, that outlines this a little bit more clearly. But I do think we need to have more instructional time in the classroom for our students. And this is a difficult thing to do when you have budget cuts, and there's creative ways to do it. One way is to push our school year forward. So we have our our school year start in August rather than in September. As going forward, our in 2026, our school year is going to start on September eighth, unfortunately. In 2016, it started on August thirtieth. So we're going in the wrong direction. And I do think that's something that without spending a lot of money, we can fix that trend and we can reverse it. And it'll make a big difference for our students and for their test scores and for for our district. And we can be an example for the rest of the schools in Oregon as well because we're a leader in in the state of Oregon. And so we can use our our leadership to help provide better education for all of the students who go to school in public schools in in Oregon. My number one priority, I want to make sure I mention, as a school board member, will be to ensure that our students can compete academically on a national level from kindergarten through AP college prep courses. And as I stated before, a lot of this comes down to time in the classroom and giving our teachers enough time to give that instruction that is so clearly needed in our in our schools. And I want to say that I'm skipping down to my third priority is to ensure that our school board includes best practices and innovative research in every decision. It's really important that as school board members, we are watching the latest research, the best practices, and we're we're reading up on the new innovations that can help our students. And as a school board member, I will do that. I will make sure that I'm always listening to our community, but also researching best practices. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kate. We will now be moving on to Neelam.
Yeah, so as I started today by saying, I have a thirty-five-year history here in Lake Oswego. My brother graduated, my daughter's now a student. I have been an active supporter of the schools. I have volunteered in the classrooms. I have also been a co-treasure of a parent club for two years during the pandemic. I also volunteered with the 2019 levy as the co-chair. And I've been actively supportive of our bonds. I've also served on the Lake Oswego Schools Foundation, which its sole mission is to hire and retain teachers. And I was proud to be appointed to the school board in 2019. I was chosen out of twenty-four candidates. And I would love to get your vote for reelection. I really want to prioritize ensuring that we maintain our fiscal responsibility, our strong history of academic excellence. I also want to make sure that we continue to create an even stronger culture of belonging. I also bring my expertise as a public health professional and a career devoted to advancing. healthcare initiatives. I am currently at the Oregon Health Authority, directing a team focused on improving primary care and workforce. I believe in building bridges to achieve policy and systems change, and I have worked with multiple partners to achieve shared goals. I have put in the time to build those relationships, which are so important here in Lake Oswego. And it's clear how important these particular skill sets and experiences are needed for our local government, such as school boards. I also would like to make sure that we, you know, continue to focus on the science of reading. It is a huge investment we have made, because reading by third grade determines future success, and reading is a fundamental civil right. I am honored to be endorsed by Stand For Children, which is a leading advocacy organization and has been a supporter of some of the early literacy initiatives at the state level.
Thank you, Neelam. We will now be moving over to Brian.
Thank you, Alice. I'm running for reelection because I fundamentally believe that schools must deliver on the promise of educating every student in the district. I'm the first person in my family to have attended college, let alone graduate from law school. And the opportunity that education provided for me has left an immutable mark on my perspective, my ambition, and my outlook. My vision for Lake Oswego gravitates around three pillars. The first is leveraging innovation. If any of you know me, you know that I am a staunch AI advocate. You might have heard a little bit more about it than you would have liked, but I believe that there is real opportunity here to leverage technology to impact in a positive way the efficiency with which we educate our children. I think the second pillar that my vision gravitates around is increasing the sense of trust and transparency within the community at large. I was surprised during the early stages of the Long Range Facilities Plan to be confronted with the abject distrust, suspicion that was given to the board, in always unfounded. But I think we were able to do some things to restore that trust and to give the community a better opportunity to understand why and how we engage in the work we do and make the decisions that we make. I think it's extremely important to continue that trust-building, because there's a lot of work that we are going to have to do together as a community to have the schools and the educational outcomes that we want for all of our children. And then lastly, it's prioritizing student wellness. One of the things that the district has been able to do over the last several years is invest in mental health resources for our student population. This is an issue that has grown in need over the last several years, and we have been fortunate to be able to meet that need. I think that is something that we have to continue to do. I think removing cell phones out of the classroom is a start and a part of that work, but there are many more ways in which we need to support students, the wellness of students, and the wellness of all and the whole student. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian. We will now be moving over to Lena.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you to our moderators. You've done a great job. I am running for the school board because I believe that our community deserves stronger leadership, leadership that will deliver both academic excellence and financial accountability. Under the current board's leadership, we have seen concerning trends. Test scores across core subjects are declining, and at the same time, our budgeting process has lacked the transparency and rigor of our, that our community expects. We're spending more but seeing less return on that investment. It's not sustainable, and it's not acceptable. My vision is centered on two things. So first, we must recommit to academic excellence. Every student in this district should be supported to reach their highest potential. We cannot continue with business as usual and allow our performance to continue to slip. We need to figure out why our scores are declining instead of applauding them. Secondly, we need true financial responsibility. With my background in finance and accounting, I know how to manage large budgets, ask the hard questions, and demand better outcomes. We owe it to our students, our staff, and taxpayers to spend the money smarter and clearly communicate how and why those decisions are being made. There needs to be an academic return on that investment. So in terms of system-level improvements, I'm, I'm going to stress this time and time again, we need to listen to families, teachers, and students, and, and listen to them in terms of the, the decisions that we make that are affecting them. As a school board member, that is your primary job. There should be no politics and no agendas. We need to put financial sustainability, excuse me, and accountability at the core of every budget and policy decision through real action. We can't be afraid to challenge the status quo. Decision-making should be transparent, and we shouldn't be afraid to ask why. I'll close by saying that the, the board, the school, Lake Oswego Schools deserves a school board that sets a higher standard and holds itself accountable. We need a board that makes decisions based on data and community input, not personal ideologies, special interests, or political agendas. We need a board that welcomes discussion and debate. I'm ready to bring these skills, the focus, and the leadership needed to move our district forward, and I'd be honored for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lena. We will be moving finally over to Casey.
Well, thank you, and thanks again for everybody who put this event together. This is fantastic, and thank you everybody for being up late with us. I know three minutes is not a long time to get into a strategic plan, but a couple of things I would like to highlight. We are about to embark on a new five-year roadmap, and I think the two areas that I would prioritize here, as Lena pointed out, as I do believe we need to restore academic excellence as one of the pillars of our community as quickly as possible. Somehow, it didn't make the list of four pillars last time around, and I think we need to make sure it's front and center this time. Beyond that, I think we need to institute a new pillar, which is prioritizing an individualized education, and that means protecting the programs and the support services that so many rely on in our schools. I think it's, that's key to the value proposition for our district in the years to come. But with the few minutes remaining, what I would like to do, if she won't be too mad at me, is I would like to leave you with a few words about my friend Liz Hartman, who is leaving the board. Liz Hartman is the one who convinced me to run for this office. She, she sold me. And I would like to point out, you know, I've always held Liz in great esteem, and she's been a, you know, a civil servant for Lake Oswego of the highest order, and I believe served on this board now for 12 years, to say nothing of heading up our Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, it occurred to me when I first spoke to her about this, that when a board loses someone like Liz Hartman, it's a big deal. We're not talking about a simple changing of seats. You're talking about losing someone who is bringing decades of context to every conversation. You're talking about someone who understands deeply the community that they've lived in for decades and brings relationship, relationships from the district up to the city and all the way out to the county. So my position is that in this situation, we as a community should be prioritizing board members who can maintain a high-functioning board and frankly bring skill sets that speak directly to the challenges in front of us now, who have board experience and know how to interface with people who bring different perspectives to the conversation. And lastly, bring decades of lived experience in Lake Oswego, not just as a student in our schools, but now as a parent of a youngster who's just getting started. In terms of my own case, you know, I've been appointed to the Clackamas County Economic Development Commission by the Clackamas Commissioners. That's why so many have endorsed my campaign. At the city level, I've been elected chair of the Transportation Advisory Board and appointed by our city council to our housing commission, our Housing Task Force last year. And for our school district, I've served now for more than five years on our Lake Oswego School Foundation Board, which, as Neelam pointed out, does nothing but raise money to try and protect teaching jobs and protect our programs in our schools. And I've been appointed by our school board to the Westridge School Advisory Committee for the last several years as well. But for me, ultimately, the reason I'm running is I want my son and his generation to have the same amazing experience in these schools as I did. It's really that simple. Thank you.